Welcome everybody here tonight because as we're getting more and more new things coming in and Graham Lake is growing, we wanted to share the vision that all of us have toward, you know, see what everybody's vision is toward the growth of Graham Lake. And we have some things that we need to do immediately. We have some things that we know have to think about long-term and so everybody knows what's going on. So we wanted to talk, you know, a little bit about Genesis, where we are with Genesis, where we are with Myers. We have a new concept coming in, what we call in the Tech Village area where Saginaw and I-75 come together at that point, which is a mixed-use development with both R&amp;D and residential, kind of a residential village in there and some shops, some small shops, some loft apartments, that kind of thing, especially for our younger people that may want to be even working in the R&amp;D buildings or R&amp;D places and be able to walk. It's a wonderful place with lots of water, you know, surrounding water, wetlands, but it's perfect for pathways. And the point itself is the headquarters for Security Credit Union. It's a regional or even national headquarters for that. And eventually they're thinking of having six buildings there. But they also are looking at all walkways and pathways around their area. And we plan to extend that with the other, with the R&amp;D buildings and with the residential section too. So that's one of the things that's going on. But in that case, okay, we have a mixed use in our future land use, our mixed use on our master plan, but we don't have a mixed-use ordinance yet. So we should try and move forward on that as we're moving forward on Tech Village. And I know that Dolores wants to get into the tree ordinance and Scott wants to, where we're going with that, Scott wants to look at walkability and pathways and whether it's going to remain with the, you know, in the planning department or whether it's going to go to parks and recreation. Those are all things that, you know, that we have to discuss and wanted to work, you know, we wanted to see what your viewpoints were and put some input in from us. So that's where, that's why we had this meeting and we want to go ahead with potential future meetings that we can have to work together because planning is just so important to what's going to happen to Graham Lake. So at that time, I'll turn it over to you, Dennis.
Thanks, Mickey. Realistically, when we first started talking about putting this meeting together and I met with Jill a couple of times, we said, one of the biggest things, the reason to have the meeting together is just to make sure everybody's on the same page. And so just for the planning commissioners members will note that we did put together copies of the master plans that all of the Board of Trustees made sure that they have a new updated copy of the 2013, I think it was, update is in here as well, so that they have it as a resource at their fingertips moving forward. But I think the biggest thing that we hope to come out of this today is to really have conversations about, you know, that new development is coming, it is time. Since 2007, things, we had the brakes slammed on us and things slowed down, you know, for obvious reasons. We're really excited that, we're on the other side of that now. We're really seeing a lot of buzz around the township office. We've got a lot of people coming in and talking to us about what's going on. And so we thought the timing was right to talk now about what do you guys see as the challenges for us, you know, I mean, as planning commissioners? Because Mickey and I were talking earlier this afternoon and we're like, you know, if somebody asks you about getting involved in politics in a community where you can really have some impact, we both agreed, planning commissioners, I mean, you guys really do can have a huge, huge impact on what happens in the community. So we thought this would be the opportunity to do that and open it up and talk about, you know, things Mickey talked about, Genesis, what's going on over there? What does that look like? You're talking about a new R&amp;D facility. There's some other, you know, bright spots on the horizon. So realistically, this is your meeting in between the planning commissioners and the Board of Trustees. We wanted to open it up and spend about a half an hour talking about those kinds of things, you know, the new development, what kind of updates do we need to our zoning ordinances? Are they working? Do we need to make some changes? This is the opportunity for that, as well as the master plan and Parks and Rec or the Tech Village or, you know, whether it's the tree ordinance, which I think is a fantastic ordinance by the way Jill and I talked about. I still have to get you that, I know. Oh yeah, I'd forgotten, it's on the list. But that's what it's for and so for the next 30 minutes, it's really, it's your meeting.
There's one other thing that I forgot to add in. I was at 911 today and then I met up with the head of the county planning commission and I found out that both DORT, the DORT extension and the traffic loop for MDOT on Holly and 75 will be, they'll be starting shoveling in '17. So we've got to take that into consideration too.
Do seventeen for both of them?
For both of them.
Okay.
Dennis, I got a question. Last week I was out in the Polte development and obviously we're all over the community. And I went out there because it was a zoning board appeals case and I wanted to take a look at what we were dealing with. And I was just stunned, that is a beehive out there of new family development and which comes to my question, do we know what, how many new single-family home permits were pulled in the calendar year '15? Because I gotta believe they've been up dramatically.
124.
Okay.
It's the third year in a row we've exceeded 100. It's the number one in Genesee County. And I think that bodes very well for us because again, third year in a row that we've exceeded 100 residential building permits. That's exciting because it tells you people want to live here and Polte certainly has a big reason for that.
That was exactly my point. You want to make sure people want to move here.
Yeah.
So we're 124 this year?
124 through 2015. We already had over six this year, I think. So that was as of three weeks ago, so.
Yeah.
That's new builds.
Building, yeah.
New builds.
That's just new builds, that's not any remodeling or anything.
Right. We had over, I mean, building permits last year were 400 and something, including everything, but 124 of those were residential and builds. That's a nice problem to have. It's a great problem. But it also means we have to be cognizant of the fact that not only do people want to live here, but are we doing the right things? Is our master plan telling the right story? Do we still support everything that's in this document? Does it still have the same vision that you guys have, that the Board of Trustees has? Those are important questions they have answered. Because if we don't know, you know, it's about that whole failure to plan thing. And I think a lot of tremendous amount of work went into building the master plan, especially the update. My hat's off to you guys as planning commissioners, I know what kind of work it takes to put out a document like this. But it's a living, breathing document and does it still put forth our values? And I think that's an important consideration as we sit here and have these conversations this evening.
I'll throw something out there if I can. One of the things that I had brought up is we've had groups actually approach the township board about the walkability of Graham Lake and bicycling paths and when we're getting ready to pave a road, you know, can we consider, you know, including a bike path, what have you? And I think all of us realize that the up-and-coming communities, you know, make plans for those kinds of things, making it more walkable and more bikeable. And we also just recently had the Parks and Rec Board, or at least representative, come to us and ask for a millage to be put on the ballot for funding for Parks and Rec. And my thoughts were, and I think I quote several others on our board, that we want to see more of a comprehensive plan for where that money would be spent because in reality, they came to us with a list of items that need to be fixed. They'd raise approximately $300,000, was it, per year, the millage would? And they had about $1 million in repairs, which after the first three years, you know, those repairs would be covered. But I was looking at, you know, what do we want to use that money for? My thoughts were, if we're trying to make township walkable and bikeable, one concern that we have is paint. And we've got a plan already for the paths. We've got a plan for the parks and we've got a plan for the master plan, but I'm not sure, you know, where those intersect and if we've made plans. I've been in some communities where they've cut holes in the highway overpass so that bicycle paths don't have to ride right alongside the traffic, but they have their own tunnel virtually. Or even under some of the major thoroughfares, they've tunneled bike paths under so they can avoid the traffic. But those are things that I think that, you know, we should possibly look at how they fit into our plans or paving a road, what have you, that we can look at those things and the parks as well, because those are a lot of times destinations for people on bikes or walking and running.
Do we have to technically approve this agenda since it's a meeting?
Well, I was looking at it as more of a work session, but we can go ahead with the agenda.
I'll make them also approve the agenda as presented, as per support.
All in favor? All opposed? The agenda stands. Okay, so we're talking now, but so you came up with new pathways and did you look at what we have? And we did approve going ahead with the Iron Bell, our part of the Iron Bell Trail, at least the engineering part so far.
Is everybody familiar with it?
I don't think that's even in, you know, in our pathway situation, so it will have to be added.
I'm not sure the planning commission's aware of the Iron Bell.
Okay, the Iron Bell Trail is, what do you guys have?
Something that Governor Snyder's certainly been behind, but it will stretch from Belle Isle to Ironwood, Michigan, right? A lot of it's using the convert and the rails to trails, but developing a system of pathways where conceivably you could walk, hike, like run from Belle Isle to Ironwood, Michigan. Probably take you a while. And try to hit the bridge around Labor Day if you're going to run across there because that's the only time you can. But it's a great vision and we've got interconnected pieces throughout across the whole state. Well, part of it runs through Graham Lake Township. There is going to be some work done on it this year from an engineering standpoint. They're going to take a look at that. The township board did approve just recently the match, about 25% match, just for the engineering services to look at where we're going to be to get that scope of work done as we move forward. But that idea is tremendous and we need to really make sure that that piece that rolls through our little neck of the woods here is where we want it and is serving our purposes and it's interconnected within our overall trails and pathway master plan.
Where is that trail through the township?
We kind of connect, you know, when you think of how it goes through Goodrich and Atlas and you know how they put their trail together, we start coming out, we're on, it's kind of a, God, I wish I had the map in front of me, because remember, I have a hard time remembering street names. I've been here long enough.
Would it be like Vassar or Baldwin or Vassar?
Yeah, there's three different sections, okay? There's one that goes up DORT following the power lines, okay? And then there's another section where we connect from on Perry Road, Ambassador, you know? And then there's a part that goes across to connect with Burton and the trail there as it goes up north.
You guys clearly haven't seen that map yet.
No, I'll make sure that you get a.
One of the things, if I want to not wave, but I'm just seeing this in quiet, but there was a meeting a few months back that the chamberists did with regard to what type of development or, you know, the growth in Graham Lake property, city and township. And one of the things they had to do as an exercise, when you came in, you got like six dots to stick on a board. And you prioritize what areas you think need attention in Graham Lake. They had police, they had Parks and Rec, they had, you know, DPW, what have you. The one, the two areas that received all the dots were the appeal and how Graham Lake, the appearance of Graham Lake Township and the city. The other one was the type of, that we need to diversify the types of businesses that are here as far as shopping and eating, what have you. But to me, the appeal of our area or the appearance, I think, you know, Parks and Rec and some of these things, talking about walkability, it all fits into what we're talking about right here today, I think.
That's why we went with the Tech Village, trying to appeal to our young people.
Right. But if they aren't connected to the rest of it, like downtown, through their bike trails or what have you, if we're creating islands, you know, around our township as opposed to connecting, if you look at Bicentennial and people that bike down Graham Lake Road towards Bicentennial, it has become kind of a recreational trail there. But I don't see a lot of that anywhere else in township, it's just that one stretch.
And the one through the park, yeah.
Yeah, the one through the park that comes out to Hill Road, it comes out of SBO, it goes, there's a picture, if you look back, there's that bridge back there and that goes through that section.
Yeah, that's.
That's that bridge, it's a walk, it goes right through.
Is that used? I don't live that way, so I don't see the area.
It comes out of the back of Bicentennial Park and then through the schoolstone, back through that path and ends out at Hill Road by the Applebee's and SBO.
So that's through the wetlands there?
Right through the wetlands, right. And way in the back, there's a picture of the wetlands where there's that bridge across.
Right, the wooden bridge that's going in.
So it's pretty cool. Took a while to get that done.
I really think that's what could help set us apart too, rather than just being another city or township in Genesee County. You know, what are we known for? I think if we focused on things like that, now we're different than the rest of the county.
I'm not opposed to islands because of how spread out they are. If we had like little pocket parks around, because that's what I would like to see, just a small enough park, not like a Bicentennial, but parks where people can go walk and sit down, meet their neighbor, have a cup of coffee, just some nice, you know, a half a block, a block, just maybe a swing set, some of these. I love the swings they have for older people and for mothers and their babies. They've got a swing now that you put the baby in it and the mother sits opposite and she swings and the baby's swinging. And they've got stuff for older people and I just think that would be so cool to have different places around the township where people could go meet up and it doesn't have to be, we're not laid out to have a specific downtown, you know? And that would draw in different people, different parks and different areas.
That's kind of what has happened with the Polte development. Because that was part of that plan and, I mean, I go in there sometimes in the summer because I've got friends who live in there and there's a lot of people there doing just exactly what you were talking about.
See, that's nice.
Yeah, because they've got their own pool facility.
Absolutely.
And they actually plow their own roads and a lot of other things that turn. Trying to think what else they have, but I know the pool, everybody has a key to the pool. Everybody pays for their pond and roads and then there's.
I think they have a gym, I think they have a weight workout facility.
Workout facility, too.
Now, those facilities are for the residents only?
Right.
They're not public?
Strictly residents.
Right, but I mean, you see a lot of residents there.
Sure.
Oh yeah, if it's there, I mean, they'll utilize it. When I grew up for a period of time in the Stone Heights and a lot of our subdivisions down there, actually in our subdivision specifically, we actually had a small city park, right? Deep into our subdivision. You wouldn't know that was there unless you were actually driving through, it's like, okay, well, here's a, you know, a swing sets and here's a, you know, tennis courts and hockey rink and all these types of things. But actually maintenance was pretty low on that. They did end up putting in a larger structure at one point, but, you know, we pretty much, you know, picked up that ourselves over there and it's great, it's a large, wide open area and, you know, we made sure that you do want to play with it. So in that, you know, mixing that in with the private development, you know, maybe that's something that we can look at. Maybe, you know, with other subdivisions coming in, if they're not willing necessarily to open up a public park area for residents, well, maybe we can, you know, look at purchasing a portion of other development to develop a park and then have that interconnected with the pathways. If we look over on the east side of the township, basically, you know, draw the township in half, how many public park facilities are on that side of the township? Very few. So I think we need to somehow incorporate, you know, the pathways that are rocky, but also incorporating the pocket park idea.
Yeah, I like that.
Into the entire plan too.
A lot of times there's vacant land, okay, that we give back to.
Kelman. The land bank.
Land bank that could be used for a pocket park.
Are you going in a different direction for a second? We talked about 2007 and the slowdown and everything. Everybody, I think, remembers the double, triple planning commission meetings and every week having a site plan. For a lot of the residential development that was granted approvals and some of the challenges that we've seen recently, I think about the Graham Lake Road development now that's come in and the group that was built out and then it sat for a number of years and then one of the challenges we've got are the streets. And the developers that were there weren't required to put in any kind of bonding to finish the streets or anything like that. And now what we've got is people in the township that, you know, at least with that group, and I don't know of others, but I can tell you a few that still don't have top caps on the road. And I think that'd be a great mini-study to have done, is to find out from an infrastructure standpoint, what some of these developers did and came in and then left, you know, and the challenges and what kind of potential exposure we've got for the future.
Yeah, we actually asked, I don't know if you've seen it, Robbie's had any, made any progress with that, but we did ask him, was it two weeks ago maybe? To start thinking about how to create a map, if at least we could show subdivisions in the township and then show one where there's activity, because I think that was one of the issues, was, you know, we've got new activity, but we aren't seeing the roads finished or what happens to those.
That's good.
To be able to then kind of zoom in and if that narrows it down to four or five subdivisions and we can at least visualize that and then start looking further into it. So trying to work.
A man called me about that a couple of weeks ago and he moved into a neighborhood. He thought it was just a regular neighborhood and his part isn't, it's all private roads. Everything else is public, but they didn't finish his, his part, well, like 10 or 12 houses. So now they're trying to get people to go along with paying for snow plowing and stuff like that. It's hard when you have, when somebody can just say, no, I'm not going to do it. And they were built, he said that the same builder had signs up for new builds and his building now. So that, I don't think that should be permitted.
Joe, you're talking like a security bond by the developer to ensure that they're.
Yeah, we're doing a great job with that with the trees, but we've got the same kind of problem with the roads, you know? I mean sewer infrastructure and there's all kinds of things that.
So that would be brand-new subdivisions when a belt comes in, there'd be new standards, what you're saying, right Joe?
There's actually some that are partially built out, that have sat for a couple of years without any activity in them and now all of a sudden four or five homes are showing up to be built. And, you know, they've never finished the top cap on the roads and they've, you know, and we don't see them as planning commission because they don't fall, they don't fall under the new development category.
Right, and unfortunately, some of these new builders that come in might just be a random person that's just come in and bought a lot, so it's not necessarily a developer. But I think bonding somewhere, like I have to bond them for the overall project, if I could bond them for roads, I would probably have to work with road engineering or something on how to do that calculation, but if I can get a big bond upfront to finish the roads, should they not? But there would have to be some sort of expiration date or something because these projects sometimes go on for 10 to 12 years.
Didn't we have to require a bond for pool houses in a particular time, back about 10 years ago, I think there was an issue of, you know, the pool building not being built and promised all the purchases of the lots and subdivision. Next thing at all, they're not building, they're not being acquired and then the developer skips town.
Yeah, the same thing happens with sidewalks, you know? We get patches of sidewalks, things like that. Just an idea, a thought.
Looking toward bonding for finished grade.
Did you want to bring up your other bonding idea?
Sure, remind me what it was.
Our last planning commission meeting regarding to a new development out there on Genesee and the gas station. Bonding for removal.
Oh yeah, removal of the gas station.
Yeah, well, that's interesting. One of the things, we also have another item on our regular township board agenda, but if we have a case that's still pending, I think that one still is, I think we should probably not get into specifics tonight, because this is sort of just a workshop thing. But I would like, I'd like to hear about your idea on that because I just know there are some issues that remain.
And I'm not sure what you're talking about for this particular development anyways. We know that we're in the middle of this one, but for future.
But you did go through with the Taco Bell, that seems to be, that was a nice arrangement that you followed through on.
I think it's coming to us.
Get it right.
Yeah, if you wait a half hour, you'd be.
You should probably leave. How about another issue we can throw in? That's with regard to the tree fund. One of the things that got me involved in looking at joining the township board was the Dover Highway Extension actually. And wanting to make sure that it was going to be something that was appealing and not just an extension of North Door Highway down to Bolton Road. And I think one of the things that I liked about the plan anyways was that it was going to be a tree-lined type boulevard or a professional district looking setup. And I'm hearing other people.
It's still in the plan.
Okay, because I've talked to.
As of today.
Some people, not fewer, but others, and they're like, well, that hasn't been determined yet, you know? I don't know if it was the road commissioner who it was, but I got the feeling that it could be just more like, you know, where we have at Walmart, which isn't bad, but I'd rather have it more friendly to the residential area that that area has as well as that were appealing to the technology and healthcare industries to make it more appealing along those lines.
Coming down from the, from the extension to Bolton Road are, it's still supposed to be a boulevard with trees.
Okay. And I think, you know, we have a tree fund, I don't know how much is on that, but might be a good use for part of that, that funding as well. And where the offices on that, that'd be one of my suggestions.
Stick with the tree fund for a little while. I think it's a great, I really, this is a great way to really impact the community by looking at that tree fund and having people replace trees that they have to remove. Reason I spoke with Jill about it a few times now is I think it needs a little bit of tweaking. One of the things was there wasn't centralized invoicing for it, so it was hard for us to track. Once it came in, you guys did a good job with it and it comes back and it says, okay, you guys are going to have to give $26,000 for the trees that have to be removed that you can't replace. It comes in here, it didn't go to finance, it didn't become an accounts payable, we didn't have a tracking mechanism, so it's something we'll work on internally. The other thing is what can that money be used for? And I think that'd be a good topic of discussion because it's about making sure that we are able to utilize that. Right now, there's $46,000 available and there's still some accounts payable that needs to come in. We can plant, you know, several trees with that, but we can look at, Bicentennial Park has a good master plan out that requires some trees that we could do something out there. There's ideas about putting it on Saginaw, but there's some pushback from the road commission on whether or not they'll allow that right away. Jeff Sears, our DPW director, came up and asked about cemeteries because when we take over those cemeteries, we don't really get any revenue for them, we just become a liability for us. There's a lot of old trees out there that need to be cut down and removed. Can the tree fund be used for that, to replace some of that in our, in the cemeteries that are now managed by the township? Is it a good spend for the tree fund? Is it a good spend for the tree fund? Good topic of discussion. We will need some direction on it at some point.
Dennis, when you talk about the tree fund, the most egregious example of that, to me, in my mind, is the proposed dentist office over on the corner of Cook and Holly Road, where some just magnificent trees were just clear-cut in that, in those two parcels, and what's ever happened there? Have we held, have we held it partly accountable, and if so, what was the disposition?
We did. Would you like me to answer?
Yeah.
Um, we did, and with their new office, they, I don't know if you remember, but in their, their plans for site plan for the new office building, the DMO facility, they did, they're replacing most of those trees on-site, if not all of them.
I remember that.
As well as all the other landscaping that they needed to put in, so it should.
But the kid, that, that right there in itself won't mitigate what they cut down. Am I correct, at least, that's my belief, because, I mean, those were huge trees.
Well, we do, the tree ordinance, the tree protection ordinance requires the replacement trees at a certain rate of this, compared to the size of the trees that were removed.
Yeah, five foot.
The larger the tree that's removed, the more trees you have to replace. Obviously, all the trees you're replacing are probably gonna be about the same size.
Was there a financial penalty, is what I'm asking?
Yes, there is.
And if so, what was it, and what happened to it?
It's, it's being collected over time because it was so big.
Okay, sorry.
And he wasn't quite a bit of money.
Like in the hundreds of thousands or something?
I was, I was in the belief it was a hundred K.
It's, it's close to that, yeah, so that's why I'm saying it's being collected over time and because he.
Well, that's good, because that, that tells me we're, we're not just letting that slide. There are some consequences when you behave in that manner.
Right, and the other, another thing that we did when we looked at, we calculated the value of the trees that need to be replaced, was if the channels had been done, if it had been done properly and they had been, had done tree survey, they would have indicated, well, these trees are damaged, these trees are dead, so you can take those down anyway. In this case, we didn't, we just said, you have to replace based on all of them.
Yeah, I do remember that.
We didn't do the survey to tell us which ones were good and which ones weren't good, so we're gonna assume that they were all good.
Were they claiming that they were diseased as?
No, 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 what they said was, oh, we didn't know there was a.
Well, that brings us to another topic, and I think that's businesses wanting to move here to Grand Lake. I have heard, you know, while I'm, I'm in favor of a tree ordinance of some sort, I have heard feedback opposed to it, that I bought property and I, I don't own the trees on that property? You know, and then the other concern is, I hear that Grand Lake is higher, you know, costs more to do business here than any other township in, you know, Genesee County. I know our township manager just put together a comparison of the costs, some of the initial costs of business we have coming here. And, you know, the big question that we hear a lot of times is, hey, how come the development's going to this part of the county instead of to Grand Lake? How come they're getting these restaurants and we're not? And I think the development that we're seeing is, is significant development, as opposed to maybe restaurant business that, I'm not sure, you know, how long those things are on, you know, when the bank goes to finance and they ask, you know, how long are you gonna be in business? Not, you know, how, how long can you stay open, basically? Places that we're getting to come here, credit union headquarters, we're here for the long haul, but.
Well, just in manufacturing areas, in the last few years, we've had main manufacturing expand, all of these businesses have expanded. Main manufacturing, TMI, Magna, Spud Software, Creative Foam, Grand Processing, all have at least a third expanded their business by a minimum of a third.
And those are job creators that, you know.
And they're not gonna move out very fast.
But I don't know, we, we talked about marketing our township a little bit too, you know. And that's probably a joint activity between the planning commission and our board as well, as far as something that we need to look at is how do we market ourselves? And what are the available properties and what are the available amenities for people coming here? Besides just, you know, whatever, hard costs.
Oh, you mentioned restaurants.
Yes.
That is one of the biggest questions I get from people is, is good quality restaurants. Enough fast food, good quality restaurants.
Right.
We have a definite lack of them. Maybe that's something that should be addressed on how to entice them to come here. And I know, I, I talked to a person who says there's a cost issue with the tap-in fees, maybe that's an issue that could be resolved somewhere down the road, I don't know. Going forward.
Yeah, it's just like another, it's also. We're, we're in the middle of it all, we're not the most expensive, we're certainly not the, the least expensive.
And there's a lot of ways to look at it, when you're, when you're putting a model together on your infrastructure, you can put into tap-in fees, so it's upfront, they can put it into upfront construction costs, amortize it over ten or fifteen years, or you can put it into rates. A lot of commercial business would encourage you to put it into rates, because they're not big users of, of, you know, volume, use charges. They'd rather see it spread out over everybody, including residents. Most of the models get some combination of both. Generally, on commercial, you, you look at it, you're sizing to meet demand, so you have to size to meet the fire flow demand for those commercial businesses. A lot of the expense of putting the infrastructure in the ground, where you're gonna size to get to a new development, has to do with the amount of fire flow you have to have to meet their needs. Even though they probably will never need to use that fire flow, what you're talking about the size of mains to get the water there, so it is there if it's available, when you put in a Walmart, a Sam's Club, they have to have a certain amount. So the infrastructure is cost more, you, you know, it depends on, the township board has to make tough decisions about what's the most equitable way to share that across, that's why I came up with that, you know, residential equivalency, equivalency units, so that you can try to get some kind of thing. But when you look at where we're at right now compared to the communities around us, we're kind of smack dab in the middle, and that's not a bad place to be.
I think we, as, as, not only as community members, but as planning commissioners or whatever we are, really need to know that, because I hear just exactly what Jeff was talking about, all their grave, I know you guys are so expensive. And I'm going, I don't even know what it is, what the tap-in fees are. Uh, but if I can, Dennis, on along a newer line of thought, with, with infrastructure and all of that, do we have any idea when the KLA pipeline comes online sometime this year, what impact that's gonna have on the community, either positive and negative, from a cost standpoint?
Negative. It, it will be pretty much the same for, for two years. Okay, and then it starts, it will start going young for users.
The cost.
The cost, so it's positive.
It's a positive.
Positive impact, it would negative cost, is what I'm saying.
Okay, so the first two years are gonna be about what they are now, and then you're gonna begin in seeing a slight decline annually or something like that?
Right.
Yeah, 'cause we're not gonna get the pass-through increases that Detroit Water's been, every year, they've been bumping the pass-throughs. So that's gonna stop, 'cause now it's a new set of users.
Yep.
And they're trying to stabilize the cost, so that there aren't getting increases, or very little.
And it, so far, everything's been on time, a little budget, I'm on the board there.
That's good, I mean, I think it's gonna be a positive, but I didn't know from an economic perspective to the citizens.
I can show you.
Uh, just a question, do you, do you guys have a meeting after this one? What time does that begin?
Seven.
Mickey, you alluded to a lot of new development, and I guarantee you, everybody I know wants to know, Ed, what's going on? So I, I don't mean to get us in another direction, but I really wanna know, what's going on?
It might, it might even be something I'm wondering if we should put on our website, as far as what's happening in Grand Lake Township, and list all the things that are going on.
Right, I think that's a good idea.
You know, as far as all the things, you know, and, and publicize the fact that last year alone, we had a hundred and twenty-four new, you know, single-family building permits, and, I mean, if, if we aren't gonna tutor on, or nobody's gonna tutor for us.
You're right, exactly.
I think, you know, talking about even, maybe not necessarily get into the details of the tap-in fees, but, but, you know. I, I think some of these, these things become urban legend, that, oh, Grand Lake costs so much to, you know, to build there. Well, not really, we're in the middle of the pack and showing where we're at, you know, where we're at, maybe it's a graph or something.
But the perception is we're at the high end.
Right.
Are we gonna take the, are we gonna ask questions page?
We talked about that and tell Maria I would feel phone calls, I can look on the website instead of calling her and asking all these questions.
But some of the questions that were raised here tonight might be good places to start with those, like, why don't any good restaurants are up here?
And, and, you know. It's, you're talking about restaurants. I was completely amazed when I went to TripAdvisor and found out that there were ninety-some restaurants in Grand Lake and, and, Grand Lake City.
They're hidden. They're hidden.
Long-term, there's a couple of views that I think the residents have here. Holly Road, Holly Road is, is turning out to what it was projected to turn out some twenty years ago. The development is, quality development's coming to, to Holly Road. Genesis is starting to pick up where it said it was going to go with this other housing system that it's gonna be putting on, which, which is, again, good quality. Where I'm leading to is Baldwin Road. Baldwin Road has a potential of being a hill or a miller road. So I, I think for long-term projections, I think these bodies need to make sure that it, it, when it comes, it's developed the way we want it to come.
That's a good point.
It's not being, some developers start spot zoning and, and along Baldwin Road, because they're gonna capitalize on Genesis growth, Holly growth, and Baldwin Road, there's talk about having an intersection out at the US twenty-three.
That's, that's seventeen, yeah, that's number two.
So that's all gonna have a major traffic impact, and that's what, that's what developers want, is traffic.
You're saying towns, they're gonna off twenty-three, they're talking about seventeen?
Baldwin Road.
Baldwin Road, they're talking about seventeen, putting a.
Intersection there.
Yeah, there, the intersection, or the thing for the extension of Door Highway and Baldwin Road, where they're gonna put the boulevards, is supposed to come in seventeen.
Right, but the exit off twenty-three and.
No, that's, that's still in the future.
Okay, I thought, I think that's what we were thinking, you're saying, is that that exit was planned for.
Jeff, are you, it's hanging out there.
Yeah.
As I'm saying, I, I don't, I'm not trying to, I understand we have a meeting at seven, I don't wanna tie anybody up, but we have, we have the current issues like restaurants or things that might pass. Well, if you really wanna zone ahead, and look ahead, and be prepared, 'cause I don't think the township is really prepared for Hill Road development. And because of that, we got into a number of issues on Hill Road. And Hill Road still doesn't look like it's a, it's a collection of residential and commercial, and they don't blend well together. And I think.
It's a good, you should look at.
We should try and do a better job.
Yeah, we should do a very good job. Institute a new plan for that area and rezone.
Well, just a, a, just like any, any other Holly Road corridor, standards. Why couldn't we do that for Baldwin instead of.
Exactly.
I think we should.
Well, I, I think it's also important for Baldwin, because if we look at the Delaw community down there, it's sustainable, there is nothing else there. If you look at other so-called retirement communities or older communities, they always have themselves surrounded by other retail development and, and where people can, can walk to a grocery store, restaurants, banks, and all these types of things. But here, we've got this beautiful development out there, and you can even go up to Jumpstone Valley with the other Pulte development. That's almost all interconnected there, the entirety of the township, and there's nothing to service either of these two huge developments. You know, you have to get in the car and go on the road, and of course, that adds traffic, and then nobody wants to go to the, the, the gas station over at Hill and Genesee. Somebody has to build something for people to go there to service those communities. So I, I think we really need to look at, you know, the Baldwin Road, you know, especially if, are, are we gonna have something that's gonna serve that, that community down there? Or are we gonna, you know, all roads lead to Saginaw, or all roads lead to Holly, you know, to, to direct everybody's, you know, attention and, and all their, their commercial and retail and everything towards those areas, you know. So I, I still think that, that we need to look at, you know, what's going on over there on this side. And currently, well, even, heck, even our roads. There's a period of time where, we talked about Genesee Road and having that connect.
Yeah.
Because there is nothing that goes north-south through there, you know, fast road stops, or dirt, or whatever, but there's, there's nothing, you know, you have to divert over to Saginaw and then take all these little cuts, sometimes, you know, two, three miles or something to go to the township. So there's a whole lot of things that we need to look at, really in the future there, and how are we gonna serve, you know, all of these large developments that we have over there on the east side? And, yeah, if we don't do it right, boy, this is gonna be just really a real problem another ten, fifteen years from now, if it isn't already.
To expand on that discussion a little bit more, during the construction, twenty-seventeen through whenever, two, three years, whatever that is, we should be thinking about all the people in that area, what, or the, I'm gonna say the hardship, no, hopefully it's not, gonna be a hardship in terms of travel, and what could we do to make their life easier? And then, once it's completed, what do we want it to be? And what do we want to encourage in terms of businesses? Maybe, I mean, businesses, we'll be looking for that, but what kinds of businesses do we think?
Well, can they cater, yeah, they'll cater to those particular types of buildings.
So, I mean, those are two areas where there needs some serious thinking, and doing that early enough, rather than, oh, by the way, it's done now, and now we're gonna start planting, and planting those seeds. My kudos go to the people that set up this meeting, this is shows proactive. Unfortunately, government is a lot of reactionary, and we're talking about something that could be reactionary, and that's what, Grand Lake Township doesn't deserve that, deserves the proactive nature that you set up by this meeting.
Well, one of the things that's gonna start to ball rolling is having, Meyer decides to build on their property, I guess it could be sooner rather than later, the corner of Baldwin and Holly, and Genesis develops their commercial corner, which they're planning they're going to do, that's gonna start the, that ball rolling right here, if we're not ahead of that.
So where are we with, with Meyer?
They came and we talked to them about it. And he said that we would like to have input into their outlots, okay? And they were not taken with, well, the people that were there were not taken with that idea, but they went back and, and higher-ups were a little intrigued, so we're, we're still waiting to hear from that.
They, they start giving reports about, there are twenty-four new builds every year.
Yeah.
That's what's gonna bring them.
Along with the restaurants.
Yeah, restaurants.
We hope.
Yeah, and so, you know, we're, we're just asking for a little more S-SX in Meyer's store than have been in other places. As long as Genesis is doing their part on the other side of the street, then we want to, we want to see what we can do to make it a nice, you know.
Well, that's another one in terms, in the future, Meyer's is gonna bring a certain kind of clientele here. So, you know, you're gonna travel, you know, some amount of time. So do they come here, stop, do something, go out to eat, and then go to Meyer's or whatever? So we should be thinking about, you know, what, what should we encourage in terms of other businesses to kind of surround that area?
That's, that's what we wanted.
On Baldwin Road, you know, that's like Brick Street, which is a way out, but it's a nice place to go. So those are some things that everybody should be saying, here's what we think, or here's what we want, and then what do we have to do to encourage those kinds of businesses?
Right, then, see, with Brick Street in relation to Meyer, there, there's nothing that links that area where the Meyer would go to Brick Street.
Right.
There's nothing that, okay, steps along the way.
There's a mile and a half, not between the two.
That's right, exactly right, and somebody from out of town has no idea that Brick Street is there. There's no easy way to get to it.
I was suggesting, like a bricks.
Or, but, exactly right.
Part closer.
But you're right, exactly, and we, and we need to have facilities like that, you know, or businesses like that, that are interspersed, you know, that, that, you know, allow people to think, when they pass by, you know, this particular restaurant, whatever, to get to Meyer, say, oh, hey, I gotta remember to go back over there, you know. So, yeah, we need, we need to have, we need to look forward there to see what, what, if Meyer's gonna have certain outlots, and you said that the township would have one that has some input into their outlots, because I, I look at, at some of the other Meyer developments, there's one out in, out in Heartland over at twenty-three, US twenty-three nine fifty-nine, and that's been built now for, I don't know, three or four years. Their outlots are still vacant.
It does.
They have zero development going on there, so I don't know if they have full control over, over that development or not. But that's something that we don't wanna have happen, you know, we already have enough of that here in township, we have to ensure that.
That's what we're working on.
One of the things, it's a huge asset, I think, we're looking to is the National Cemetery for itself.
Exactly.
I mean, I know a few people that have this. So I know a few people that have businesses in Holly. And when that cemetery opened, their restaurant business doubled or quadrupled. And the people that come into town for the cemetery on a daily basis.
And works closer to the cemetery than on township.
Yeah, exactly.
And we've got that corner there that we're going to develop. The other thing is, I think, following development on Baldwin Road, I'm not prejudiced because I live in that area, but I'd like to see us protect those neighborhoods in terms of, you know, commercialization of Baldwin. But yet protecting the residential. And there's also a lot of wildlife in that area too that, you know, we need to protect. We've got the national, the conservation.
It has conservation.
Yeah, the big Lost Lake Woods project, I think we have to promote that more because that's something that's very unique. And it's right there at Baldwin Road, over the bridge there, so.
It's able to be utilized now.
Right, it's, yeah, it's open now, it opened last year. But it's still, it's not as big as it should be because they're trying to advertise it. But I think we should advertise more of it and that'll help that Baldwin intersection. Because that's a place you can go and then come back to the restaurants or the Myers or other things.
600 acres, yeah.
Yeah, and it's all natural. There's like, I don't know how many lakes are in there, but some of the lakes are just unbelievably huge and they're all untouched. And so it is a nature preserve. It's, I don't think there's anything within, you know, a couple hundred miles that's that big. Because they structured and said, get a one that was donated with this much landmass all in one chunk. It was like more than a quarter of what they were trying to do overall. And they were just so excited. Because there was laning strips out there, east and west. And there was some homes that are real private, but most of it, they're working around that. So you don't see any of that. It's all nature trails and it's all, it's there. So I think we have to promote that big time, especially since it's so close to Baldwin Road.
Who manages that?
That's managed by the, I'm trying to think, it's?
Conservator.
Yeah. They own it and they manage, they manage a lot of them throughout Michigan. And I think that was one of their biggest ones that they're managing as far as size in one spot. They were so excited about it. And it is beautiful out there.
To your point, our role of the township should consider some kinds of events that's kind of like, come get acquainted, you know.
Yeah, anything we can do to publicize it because people don't know.
To promote it, not just?
You're right.
Put something in writing, but some events out there for kids, teenagers, adults.
Just to go through the last opening, their opening, you know, they had an ornithologist, you know, going through and showing all the birds, you know, type of thing. You know, that you could take this bird walk and he explained all the birds that were, some of them particularly native to that conservatory.
Yeah, because they do have nature walks and hikes and things like that. But we, you're right, we got to promote it to get people aware of it because it's been a while. I hadn't seen much about it, so we've got to do a better job of promoting it.
We'll use the media to help us there. I think I saw a spot on that about some hiking on Channel 12. Why can't we do something to use the local media to help us?
That's a good idea.
And of course, it's partly in Oakland County, so they're trying to push it there. But I would push it more from our side because we're at the top part. And with Baldwin exploding like that, it'd be a perfect problem.
Yeah, Jim, I know we're crunched for time, but I don't want to see us drop the ball on this. I'm wondering how we get the ball rolling now, not doing something on the Baldwin Road corridor that was suggested in terms of making sure that we put together a plan in advance of all these developments going on.
We can move that up on the agenda for our project to get something started at least so we can set a unit plan.
Yes.
Does it seem like it would be helpful if we met periodically at a big group like this to rainstorm and?
Lots of water.
Yeah. One of the things that we talked about with the, well, we talked about with Holly Road corridor, but also with Hill Road corridor, we have these corridor standards throughout the township. But some of them are conflicting because they're so old. Hill Road in particular is really, we've seen a couple of spots where it conflicts with current ordinance language. We defer, obviously, to the current ordinance, but sometimes it's confusing for people. So I think just in general, maybe standards that apply on certain roadways. And then maybe we can focus on specific things, but maybe kind of looking at them holistically.
Having this fully integrated, maybe the zoning ordinance.
Right, cross-referencing so that people are really clear. I think that's another issue too, is that sometimes we have these, they're old, especially Hill Road. And sometimes they're hard to find. So we'll say, well, can I check on the website? Well, they aren't always, and sometimes they're not always easy to find. So we just need to make sure that where we are giving people extra standards, that we reference them and they make them easy to find too, and easy to understand and apply.
Dennis, do you want to draw to a close?
Well, I think, you know, one of the things that we talked about after we got this together, we chatted a little bit earlier today, was about how, exactly, how do we move on? What do we do next? Because we want to make sure we keep the energy going of the planning, commission, and board trustees coming together. And it was, you know, a quarterly update. So there's a lot of ways we can do it. And it's how do you guys feel that's the best thing to do? Is do we meet like this, in this format? Do we do, plan it on a committee of the whole? Do we just meet in smaller groups? What's the general consensus of everybody? The most helpful of the both full commission and board are here?
I like it the way it is right here in there.
And to Chris's point, the more we meet, the more we'll get done. Because we're all, you know, eyed by our calendars and, oh, God, I've got to get this done or that done, whatever.
How many actionable ideas do we have as an outgrowth of this meeting this evening?
I've got about six. You know, one of the things we started talking about, some of the things we could put on the agenda, and we stopped ourselves, because we go, you know, and if we start putting all these on the agenda, one of these could take an hour. And we've got one hour, it's kind of a kickoff meeting. So we wanted to do that 10,000-foot view. And we can drop down on, you know, as we move forward. Now we're a thousand-foot view, now let's take care of it. So we did cover a 10,000-foot view here tonight. I mean, there's so many things from the tree ordinance to, I didn't realize you guys liked the Ironbell Trail map. I'll get that to you. The tap-in fee comparison study, I'll get that to you. So that you guys all have that information. Because I think it's critical from a planning commissioner's standpoint that you have it.
I was at Reed Barber Shop this morning, I had my hair cut. Across aisle, back and forth, and there was two other gentlemen sitting in chairs. And that was their complaint, that they talked back and forth outlawed, lack of restaurants. This morning.
And you guys probably don't?
Everybody says that.
We're meeting every month in an economic development group between the business owners, the city. Mickey and I, it is a small group that we're meeting about economic development, how we move from here and how do we market ourselves? And can we develop a survey to send it out? How are we going to attract developers in here? So it's ongoing behind the scenes and not everybody sees it, right? I'm sure you guys probably didn't know we were meeting on a month.
We need to tell people about it because otherwise they think we're not doing anything.
And putting, I will put these things on, you know, the, what we are doing on the website so people can see.
But at the very least, we should be communicating better with the planning commissioners. Because everybody knows, I mean, you guys are planning commissioners, you're out in the community. People are saying, so what's going on? Or I heard about this and you need to know. I mean, you should have the information when it's available.
A suggestion, planning mission meets once a month. We're very regular about that right now. Possibly a little memo from you, Dennis, on latest developments that are coming along. Just as a handout in our package that we would get at our monthly meeting. This way, maybe there are even things you don't even know is kind, by the way, you give a great rendition, but.
And even an update on these items that we talked about here so that.
Yeah.
And maybe likewise too, we can also send back from planning commission and site plan review committee a list of who we've been talking to and what we've been seeing.
Yes, two-way street.
Yeah, exactly.
I think we should include CBA in that too.
Two comments, like me. One is, on the website, it's important to keep it up to date. And there's nothing worse than looking at old stuff and then you lose credibility then with the rest of it. Secondly, did the township ever do anything in recognizing ASI, the building across the street that they came in and?
Not yet.
Not yet, but is it going to?
Yes, it's going to be.
Major improvement. Oh, yeah, how long has that been sitting with it?
Well, that's something on any business that comes in or does that.
But it's night and day on ASI. Restructured also is just beautiful.
Well, we need to figure out a way, we, you know, we're talking about restaurants. And other than tax abatements, which I don't think we're in a position to give, what are ways of encouraging businesses to come to Grand Lake? And we recommend, one of them is recognizing people that do a bird job, like ASI.
We got caught up, we got caught up in the certification of the paying for it or what we would do, whether we're going to a plaque or a certificate or what. Because legally, we can't, we can't pay tax money for plaques, okay? So.
I gave my two cents on that. Give them something that they can hang up in their lobby and be proud of. That people could come in and say, hey, what's that? Oh, really, they did that for you?
We can have a framed series.
Yeah, it's got to be something that's like worthy of hanging in the front office and people seeing it. Other businesses noting, wow, they did that for you?
I think we should get a plaque. And if we have to collect within the board or whatever to fund it, we should fund it. Because it's got to be, a sheet of paper is not as good as a nice plaque. Like you're saying, something that's going to stand out. And if we can't take it out of our coffers, then we're going to have to donate internally to get it done.
And then it should go on the website, such and such kind of plaque.
Yeah, we'll even invite the media there for that day.
Well, a nice article in the newspaper.
Sure, absolutely. And business is like that.
The Chamber of Commerce gives a brick with a small plaque on the brick to new businesses. And if you walk into businesses, you'll see those bricks. They're probably.
Maybe get somebody to write an editorial about it.
Okay.
I think you better.
Yeah, I'm afraid we're going to have to close. We're five minutes past the other meeting. But we will get together again very soon and follow through on many of the suggestions that we've given.
So we should expect to maybe see in the second quarter another meeting?
Yes.
I just have a suggestion, instead of waiting the whole quarter, because we've got some critical issues like that Lost Lake Woods and things. If we could meet sooner, if it's possible, I think it'd be better. Just think about it, I mean, we were going to go quarterly, but it seems like we've got to push these things right now. We've got to worry about that Baldwin Road section and the Lost Lake Woods. If we get something that's hidden, actually is lost out there. We got to get it found, right?
Or really named.
Does 6:00 PM work for most people? Or sooner than three months from now either?
What's the relationship with the city? How are we meshing with the city?
Very good, we're working.
We're a lot better with them.
We need, we do.
So 6:00 PM is a good time for most of us? And then is there a day that's better than others?
I think it would be better not to do it on a board meeting day in case it runs over.
Yeah, if we do it like on the third, the fourth Thursday, you know, fourth Tuesday meeting, that way if we run over, you know, we've got more time.
The only thing is, for some board members, they might be planning to be in town on days that we have a board meeting.
That's where parks and RAC and zoning, CBA and stuff, they all follow that, fire commission, so.
It forces you to keep it in one hour.
Yeah.
The meeting will stretch to as long as you can.
Yeah, there you go.
But you need to generate time for that one hour. See?
Yeah, is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
All of them say?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Grab your plaque.